It's now 6:00 PM. So let's start this mid-year budget review of this adjourned meeting of the city council. And as far as roll call, Councilmember Lopez is excused and the remaining four members are present. And with that, we'll get right into the workshop. And who wants to lead off? All right, Janet, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, members of the audience. I don't have too many, but that's okay. Tonight, I'm here to present the fiscal year 2022-23 mid-year budget review. So first, we're going to start with a summary of the recommended changes to the fiscal year 2022-23 general fund appropriations budget. So the total requests this year were $1,795,769. The city manager recommended amount is $1,546,110, and we'll go into detail on those in the following slides. There are no changes to City Council Department this year. For the City Manager Department, we have information technology services, maintenance office equipment. Due to remodel of the city facilities and modifications to programming needs related to service delivery for programs throughout the city, additional funding is needed. Request $10,000. City manager recommended $10,000. Administrative services, central services, maintenance office equipment. Due to extraordinary maintenance requirements related to office equipment citywide, additional funding is requested. $15,000 is requested. $15,000 is recommended. For human services, recreation, community benefits. In March 2023, the Montclair Community Activities Commission will be meeting to consider requests for community-based charitable well-being, health, education, and safety services, and submitting recommendations to the city council for approval. In order to meet a growing community need for third-party collaborative services related to preceding community-based welfare assistance-type services, the city manager recommends increasing funding for the community benefits account, so we would like to increase it by $15,000. Police Department. Administration cellular phone expense. So in September of last year, the department's cellular phone carrier Verizon upgraded the department cellular service plan. This new plan has added benefits and features, including priority service and support. So they're getting additional service. There's additional funding that's needed to cover this plan. An additional $3,000 was requested. $3,000 is recommended. Also on the police department, support services overtime. With several vacancies in the department, there have been ongoing recruitments and pre-employment investigations that frequently require additional time and effort to accomplish. Support Services also conducts pre-employment investigations for other city departments. This requested increase of $9,000 can be accomplished through a transfer of funds from Support Services part-time wages. Investigations overtime. Due to the unpredictable nature of criminal activity, an increase to the initial appropriation is requested to ensure that there are enough funds to cover the cost of callouts and holdovers that are required to initiate and complete criminal investigations. The requested amount of $30,000 can be accomplished with a transfer of $30,000 from Uniform Patrol regular earnings. Uniform Patrol overtime. Due to several unfilled vacancies in patrol throughout the fiscal year, which require backfill to ensure minimum shift coverage is maintained, this account is over expended. They're requesting an additional $466,000. This is being accomplished with a transfer of $266,000 from Uniform Patrol regular earnings and a transfer of $200,000 from Uniform Patrol overtime in the COPS Elias Grant Fund. Uniform Patrol gasoline. Due to the increased cost of gasoline, it is requested to increase the initial appropriation to cover gasoline costs until the end of the fiscal year. They requested $60,000. The recommendation is $40,000. Uniform Patrol diesel fuel. Based on current needs and to ensure enough funds are available to cover fuel costs until the end of the fiscal year, an increase is requested. $14,000 was requested. $14,000 is recommended. Uniform Patrol maintenance, other equipment. Annual maintenance of the firearms range ventilation system is recommended by the manufacturer to ensure proper airflow and air filtration. The maintenance package includes, in part, replacement of all inlet air filters, tightening and inspecting all mechanical and electrical connections, lubricating and adjusting all dampers, replacement of blower drive belts, and inspection of sensors in the range for proper operation. So an increase of $4,450 is requested for these, this maintenance, and $4,450 is recommended. Communications part-time wages. After the fiscal year 22-23 budget was repaired, the department was allowed to hire three part-time dispatchers, one of which moved to full-time status in November 2022. An increase is requested to cover the cost of these part-time dispatchers. They're requesting $35,000. The recommendation is $25,000, and that can be accomplished with a transfer from Uniform Patrol regular earnings. Communications overtime. Due to vacancies throughout the fiscal year, which require backfill to ensure minimum shift coverage is maintained, this account is now over expended. The department hired one full-time dispatcher in August 2022 and two in November 2022, including the part-time dispatcher who moved to full-time status. It is anticipated that overtime usage will decrease due to these new hires. An increase is requested to cover the cost of overtime for the remainder of the fiscal year. They're requesting $33, I'm sorry, $30,000. $30,000 is recommended, but that will be accomplished through a transfer from Uniform Patrol regular earnings. Communication special contract services. This account covers the cost of the department's contracts with language line services for foreign language translation for non-emergency over-the-phone interpretation services. An increase to the initial appropriation is requested to cover costs for the remainder of the fiscal year. The request is $3,000. Recommended $3,000, and that will be paid out of the SB 509 Public Safety Fund. So the total general fund impact of changes for the police department is $61,450. Fire Department. Emergency services overtime. Due to unfilled vacancies, medical leave, and emergency callback, mandatory backfilling of key positions is required in order to prevent shortfalls in the fire department's minimum deployment levels. An increase is requested to cover the cost of overtime for the remainder of the fiscal year. The request was for $450,000. The recommendation is for $320,000. A portion of that, $33,000, will be handled with a transfer from Uniform Patrol regular earnings. Emergency services uniforms. Uniforms are purchased for recently hired firefighters, and two more firefighters will need to be hired to fill current vacancies that will also need uniforms. In order to outfit current and new employees for the remainder of the fiscal year, an increase to the initial appropriation is requested. The request was for $10,000. The recommendation is zero. We feel that there's enough funds remaining in the budget at this point to cover the needs for the rest of the fiscal year. Emergency Services personnel protective equipment. The department currently has two vacancies. The cost to outfit one firefighter in personnel protective gear is approximately $15,000. Each firefighter's turnout is size specifically for him/her, and along with cost increases and supply chain problems, the overall costs have increased substantially. The request for the increase is $80,000. The recommendation is $40,000. The fire department totals an increase, net increase of $327,000 to the general fund. Public Works Department. Street maintenance overtime. Overtime funds were spent on standby, street emergencies, weed abatement, tree trimming, graffiti removal, and weekend transcenter restroom cleaning. To complete two transcenter cleanup days and weed abatement plus transcenter restroom weekend cleaning and standby for the remainder of the fiscal year, additional funding is requested. $15,000 was requested. $15,000 is recommended. Street maintenance special contract services. The adjustment requested is to replenish this account due to extra work that Mariposa and West Coast Arborist have completed to date this fiscal year. Due to vandalism and city yard staffing levels, Mariposa was tasked with making the necessary irrigation repairs to all parks, civic center, and center medians. West Coast Arborist was also used for tree emergencies, tree trimming, stump removal, and tree planting. So additional funds of $47,430 were requested. $30,000 is recommended, and that will be out of the gas tax fund. Signing and painting overtime. The majority of the overtime funds were spent installing holiday decorations and flags. Chamber of Karma banners will need to be installed this year, and it is expected to take three days to complete. They're requesting an increase of $1,700. $1,700 is recommended. Street sweeping overtime. This account is over expended due to the cleanup needed after the recent storms. They're requesting an additional $1,000. $1,000 is recommended. Park maintenance overtime. This account is over expended due to weekend standby, after-hours emergencies, transcenter restroom cleaning, and ballfield preparation. $17,659 was requested. $15,000 is recommended. Irrigation maintenance special contract services. Public Works does not have a maintenance worker with backflow certification. All backflow work is performed by basic backflow. So they need an increase of $2,776. $2,776 is recommended. Vehicle maintenance, materials, transportation, and work equipment. The cost of parts has significantly increased with inflation. Costs for the remainder of the fiscal year include repair of a cylinder head on fire engine 151, repair of an emissions problem on fire engine 152, and miscellaneous parts to repair city vehicles. A $43,000 increase was requested. $43,000 increase is recommended. Vehicle maintenance gasoline. Due to the high cost of gasoline, an increase to the initial appropriation is requested. $23,000 was requested. $8,000 is recommended. Vehicle maintenance oil and lubricants. Additional funding is requested for the purchase of 200 gallons of 15-840 motor oil and 155-gallon barrel of Valvoline Gen 2 motor oil for the street sweepers. And since we have a second street sweeper now, it's taking additional oil and lubricants. $2,000 is recommended. I'm sorry, $2,000 is requested. $2,000 is recommended. Vehicle maintenance compressed natural gas. Due to the increase of the price per gallon and the addition of a second CNG street sweeper, this account is over expended. An increase of $16,000 is requested. $16,000 is recommended. Vehicle maintenance, maintenance transportation work equipment. For the remainder of the fiscal year, the following repairs are needed. Replacement of the transmission and dump truck unit 218, replacement of the hybrid batteries in units 104 and 106, and small checks on 30 city vehicles. These repairs will exhaust the remaining budget in this account. Additional funding is requested to cover other outside maintenance and car washes. $5,000 is requested. $5,000 is recommended. City maintenance, I'm sorry, sewer maintenance diesel. Due to the high cost of diesel, an increase to the initial appropriation is requested. $7,500 was requested. $7,500 is recommended, and that will be coming out of the sewer operating fund. Building maintenance overtime. Due to operating the splash pad for the summer months, remodeling the police department's shooting reins, and remodeling, remediating city hall, this account is over expended. Additional funds are requested to cover the negative balance to operate the splash pad on weekends during the summer months and unforeseen emergencies. $18,184 is recommended, I'm sorry, requested. $18,184 is recommended. This leaves a net increase to the general fund of $127,660 for the public works department. Community development. Plan check, plan check service. The size of projects, since the city's consultant for structural plan review has increased, additional funding of $35,000 is requested. $35,000 is recommended. City Attorney. City Attorney legal services court costs. Due to extraordinary and ongoing legal expenditures related to claims against the city requiring use of outside legal counsel, additional funding is requested to cover costs for the remainder of the fiscal year. $40,000 is requested. $40,000 is recommended. City Attorney special legal services. Due to extraordinary and ongoing legal expenditures related to claims against the city requiring additional participation from the city attorney, and due to a contract rate adjustment for the city attorney, additional funding is requested. $15,000 is requested. $15,000 is recommended, with a total of $55,000 for the city attorney. Citywide. Personnel services, general liability claims. Due to unanticipated general liability claims, this account is over expended, and additional funding is requested to cover the cost for the remainder of the fiscal year. $850,000 is requested. $850,000 is recommended. Services and supplies, electrical service. Due to the increased cost of electricity, additional funding is requested. $50,000 is requested. $50,000 is recommended, for a total of $900,000 for the citywide department. Now we'll move on to the statement of general fund expenditures for the six-month ending December 31st. So most departments are doing really well. Some are well under 50%, and we have a little few departments that are over 50%. The highest departments, City Attorney, is 71% expended, and Citywide is 101% expended due to the general liability claims. So overall, with the city, we are 54% expended, Citywide. General Fund revenue detail. So for the general fund taxes, we're suggesting an increase in revenue of $839,106. That is due mostly in part to a $500,000 increase in Measure L. Licenses and permits, we're suggesting, recommending $207,000 increase. $200,000 of that is for building permits. Intergovernmental revenues, an increase of $90,000. Fines and forfeitures, an increase of $53,400. Charges for services, $187,000. And miscellaneous revenue, an increase of $71,000, with an overall general fund increase Now we'll do our general operating fund analysis. So revenue increases, we're anticipating $1,447,506. Our general fund expenditure increases are $1,546,110. So we have a deficiency of $98,604. Fiscal impact. Revising the city's appropriations budget increases the spending authority by $1,546,110 in the general operating fund. Revising the city's estimated revenue budget has a total positive impact to the general operating fund of $1,447,506. Approval of both the appropriations and estimated revenue budgets would have a negative budgetary impact to the general operating fund of $98,604. A transfer from the unanticipated personnel adjustment reserve will fund this negative budgetary impact. Recommendation. Staff recommends the city council consider the city's mid-year budget review documents and approve proposed changes to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. And so now, after discussion at last night's council meeting regarding the lease revenue bonds and where we stand, we decided to add a little overview to tonight's presentation. So in November 2021, at a workshop, the following potential projects were presented to the city council, which totaled $47.7 million. For Arrow Highway, we have streetscape project and design, and utility undergrounding for a total of $2.7 million. Benson Avenue median and pavement rehab, $2.1 million. Mills Avenue, $3.8 million. Montevista Avenue, $4.6 million. Palli Verti Street, $1 million. Bridgestone Street, $1 million. Huntington Drive Design, $100,000. Fremont Avenue Streetscape, $1 million. Marina Street Utility Undergrounding, $1.5 million. La Rambla Design, $100,000. Zone 2 Street Pavement Rehab, $510,000. San Antonio Creek Channel Trail Pilot Section, $1 million. Modular Restrooms at Transcenter, $250,000. Alleyway Improvement Citywide, $3 million. Street Striping Program Citywide, $450,000. Retro Reflective Signal Backplate Striping Citywide, $75,000. Holt Boulevard Median and Pavement, $2.2 million. Mission Boulevard Median and Pavement, $2.8 million. Zone 5 and 6 Pavement Rehab, $4 million. Parks Master Plan, $250,000. Freedom Plaza, $100,000. Saratoga Park Improvements, $1.5 million. The total project cost is $3.5 million, but we have $2 million in grant funding from the state. MacArthur Park Improvements, $1.15 million. Kingsley Park Improvements, $580,000. Essex Park Improvements, $1.16 million. Marina Vista Park Improvements, $875,000. Sunset Park Improvement, $600,000. Sunset Park Improv, I'm sorry, Sunrise Park Improvement, $675,000. Golden Girls Park Improvements, $465,000. Rita Ranch Fencing Improvements, $300,000. County Park Improvements, $300,000. The total project cost is $4.5 million, but we're trying to get additional funding, grant funding, to cover the remainder of that project. Fire Station 2 Landscape Improvements, $30,000. San Bernardino Street Screen Wall, $352,000. Police Department Handrail, $165,000. Public Parking Garage Design, $1 million. Safe Routes to School, $3.3 million. Local Road Safety Program, $2.75 million. So the current projects we have in progress that we have spent money on. Safe Routes to School, we've spent $31,261. That's for Vernon School Design and Signage. Zone 5 and 6 Street Rehabilitation, this is nearing completion. It's just over $3.6 million. Civic Center Standby Generator, this is for the design and a portion of the generator, $60,948. Parks and Recreation Master Plan, $41,556. This is just for special consulting services at this point. Central Avenue Rehabilitation Phase 2, $3,490 toward the design. Sunset Park, $14,120 for design. NMDSP and MPDSP Street Master Plan, $357,221 for design. Holt Boulevard Median and Street Rehabilitation, $33,442 for design. Mills Avenue Rehabilitation, $18,360 for design. And city engineer consultant salary, $157,426. The following projects have been completed. The Transcenter Restroom, $186,103. City Hall Monument Sign, $63,520. The Public Works Community Development Counter, $55,762. Fire Station 2 Landscaping, $52,145. And the Alleyway Improvement Project, and this is the CDBG target area, so the bonds had to pick up what the CDBG funds didn't cover, which is that actually should be $145,277. I had a little typo there. And so some grant funding that we have that will help aid in the, some of these projects, the Rita Ranch Park, $5.1 million. Sunset Park, $5.2 million. And Saratoga Park, $2 million. And city staff is pursuing additional grant funding in relation to park improvements and infrastructure projects.
We should also mention, we have $300,000 for the purchase of the generator for Civic Center.
Yes, that is correct. So for the 2021 lease revenue bonds, the issue amount was $45 million. We had an issue premium of just over $2.8 million. The expenses paid to date is just over $4.9 million. The remaining balance is just over $42.9 million. And additional project costs approved by council that are not included in the expenses paid to date is just over $4.1 million. That concludes my presentation. So if anybody has any questions?
Okay. Any questions from us, council?
The only thing that really caught my attention, I have comments, just how pleased I am, but the only thing that caught my attention was Republic Works, the overtime. I lost the page. I think it was 15 or 16. Well, I'm sorry. So it seems like the actual mid-year expenditures have already used the current appropriation, they've exceeded the current appropriations budget. Is the reason because we now are well-staffed to avoid the overtime usage?
Yes, yes. They've gotten more well-staffed with their maintenance workers. They're pretty close to fully staffed. They might have a couple that they still need to hire, but yes.
Okay. Yeah, just with the spring season starting up and this weather.
Yes.
But that makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Denise? No? Bill? No? You guys want me to talk? Okay. Um, and the police and fire department, I'm going to ask a question about as far as staffing levels, and I don't know if you have the answer to the question, but how many vacancies do we have in police in terms of police officers, or I know it's the same question you keep asking the chief over and over, but obviously, a lot of the, a lot of the overtime is being covered by savings in uniform salaries, or uniform personnel cost.
So we have seven that are listed in the budget right now, but two that are in lieu positions. So that's, that's the actual vacancies right now. The other issue is, is while, while some of the regular earnings is covering some of the overtime, we still do have some individuals that are in training, either in the academy or in field training.
Right.
So they're not functioning as a regular officer, and that's going to cause us to incur additional overtime.
Yeah. We have seven openings right now?
Yes.
Seven open positions, funded positions?
Seven that are funded in the budget, yes.
Are open?
Yes.
All right. And how about the fire department?
The fire department is currently staffed with enough personnel, but there is a vacancy, well, one vacancy that just occurred in the last month, and then another one that's occurring on the 23rd of February. And so that, I think, might leave us one short.
Okay. All right, then.
And I take that back. There's one engineer vacancy right now, so.
Okay. Okay, then. And I'm assuming as far as the recruitment is going off the engineer position?
Recruitments are going on, but recruitment well has kind of dried up a little bit. Our last recruitment for firefighter only yielded two candidates, and our recruitment for the police department only yielded five, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have, that's a discussion we'll have to have as far as recruitments.
We'll have to have, we need robots now, the builders, basically?
Yeah. I don't think that's happening just yet.
Yeah, I understand. Kind of scary, but I know it's system-wide. All right. And then as far as the, and I appreciate staff, I didn't expect staff to put this into this, this meeting today. I was, I thought maybe, I was okay with the budget workshop in June, but I appreciate you putting that, putting this in now. So I know, I know that we spent $5 million, spent $5 million? Yeah. $4.9 million expenditures to date. So as far as these projected projects on page 27, 28, 29, and 30, we're still good to fund these projects based on these budgeted numbers?
Well, we are, but as you can see, there's going to be some variations, obviously. So for example, the Zone 5 area is actually less than what we budgeted for here, but will it ultimately get to that amount? We'll have to wait to see projects completed. Some of these projects will not be completed, maybe because of a lack of time to complete them. So what does that mean at the end? Will we spend the entire 45-plus million dollars? It's hard to say at this moment.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. As far as comments are concerned, it's a very encouraging mid-year budget review with exception one item. And like I said, I think last June, it was very encouraging, the budget we came up with for this current fiscal year, so I've seen a lot worse, right, Ed?
Certainly have.
We've had a lot worse in the past on this mid-year budget review. So any more comments by councilmembers? Go ahead, Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, nothing very insightful, just fantastic. I'm really excited to see that we're, we have a very well-balanced budget, and it seems like our departments are, are being taken care of, and we have projected a healthy fiscal rest of the year. So thank you for putting this together for us so that we could see what's going on, and I'm excited that we are continuing to recover very well from COVID and any anticipated financial problems I really just don't see on the horizon anymore, so thank you.
Okay. Any more comments? Now we just reflect, yeah, the numbers look good, but my concern these days is making sure we have the sufficient staffing levels. So some departments are doing good in staffing, others are lacking, and I don't know, you fix that with more money at it, or I think there's other issues going on in our economy and the job market that's, creates a greater challenge. Obviously, we have the great resignation, one reason why we have inflations, because a lot of companies are raising their salaries to hire people and because they're, because they don't have enough candidates for positions in many, many different industries. So that's the thing that bothers me, is making sure we have not just bodies, but qualified bodies. And that's, it's easy to find the bodies, it's hard to find the qualified bodies, right, Marcia? So, all right. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I approve.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Johnson. All right, move by Councilmember Johnson, and I believe that Councilmember, Mayor Potem Johnson moved, and Councilmember Bruce second, and just, we'll do electronic vote.
We do have someone on Zoom who wants to comment. I don't know if you want to take their comment before the vote?
Somebody on Zoom? Okay, let's, we'll do.
I don't know if you can see the screen with the presentation up?
All right, I don't have any screens here, so I can't see, I don't know. I can't see any raised hands or anything. So, we'll take public comment, and the public comment will, will include the public comment for the entire agenda. So, go ahead, Bruce, you have five minutes.
Thank you. No, I think I agree with a lot of what the comments of the council and, and all. You know, this is a good budget review at this point in time. You know, it's good that, you know, I appreciate all those council members in attendance doing the work to keep us informed and making sure that staff are doing their part. And I appreciate all the staff, all the managers that I see there, and, and all the staff at the city doing, you know, going above and beyond every single day to run this city. It's a hard thing. The more I learn about all this stuff, the harder it seems to be that you guys can keep this stuff going day in and day out, obviously. And, you know, my biggest numbers that I saw out there that seemed alarming to me were the overtime budgets, which means, you know, I thought that meant a lot of understaffed positions. And I don't know if staffing that'll change the overtime amounts or not, but hopefully, we can get fully-staffed positions. And then, the only other thing that concerned me was the, the attorney, city attorney budget seemed to be excessive, and I was wondering if that had anything to do with the, you know, sexual harassment claims against the city. And that sure would be nice to know more detail about the city attorney's budget and why that's a little out of whack, but I don't, probably not going to get any answers today. But anyways, great job, everybody, I really appreciate having these meetings and listening and understanding the budget better. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bruce. All right, I don't see anybody else that wishes to speak from the public on Zoom, and I don't think anybody in the audience wants to speak. No? Okay, let's vote. Okay, passed four zero, and so with that, we adjourn.